Shortly. The State Board of Ed meeting of August 12th, 2014 is called to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items to add or delete from today's agenda? I have a motion then?
So move.
Supported by John. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same? Thank you. Merz, you're up.
Good morning. I'd like to introduce to you the people seated at the board table. To my immediate left is Mike Flanagan. He's the chairman of the board and he's the state superintendent. As we go around the table, the president of the board is John Austin. He resides in Ann Arbor. Next to him, the board's vice president, Cassandra Ulbridge, from Rochester Hills. Dan Varner is in the seat next to Cassandra and he is on his way, be here momentarily. He's the board secretary. He's from Detroit. Lupe Ramos-Montini is board member. She's from Grand Rapids. Next to her is Melody Arabu. Melody is this year's Michigan Teacher of the Year for 2014-15. And when she's not here with us, she is teaching at Keith Elementary School, third graders, in the Wall of Light Consolidated School District. So, welcome. And across the table, you have Eileen Weiser. Oh, I'm sorry, Craig?
No problem.
Didn't see him. Craig Ruff, Governor's Strategic Education Advisor. Next to Craig is Eileen Weiser. She's a board member from Ann Arbor. Kathleen Strauss, board member from Detroit. Michelle Fecto, board member from Detroit. Michelle is the National Association of State Boards of Education representative. And then, next to me, is Richard Zilee. He's from Dearborn and he's the board's treasurer. Thank you.
So, Richard Zilee, was that a toast that we saw there?
Just a signal, yes.
Just a signal. Well, good morning. It's been two months and we're back at work together. And I wanted to start with, it's never, a little, very short video to show that it's never too early to train future leaders. The lights are coming on.
So, you've called the meeting to order? So, say, everyone be quiet.
Everybody be quiet.
The meeting's starting.
The meeting's starting.
Starting, yeah. Good boy. Well, thanks, Will. We'll use that at the board meeting. Okay? Good with that? Okay.
That's our grandson, Will, and he was sitting right here and wanted to do what grandpa does, so he got this started and that makes it official. We had all of the grandkids overnight Saturday night. I'm still resting. There is a reason that young people have these babies, I think. You know, a couple of things. One is bittersweet. There's a few announcements right up front that gave me permission to announce this, even though she's been very modest about this approaching retirement, and that's Flora Jenkins. Most of us know and love her. She's a wonderful person. It's really bittersweet to announce her retirement and gave me permission to do so at the meeting here. Dr. Flora Jenkins really has served the department for 25 years. The last date is the director of the Office of Professional Preparation Services. Dr. Jenkins has served Michigan as a teacher, an assistant dean of students, a residence hall director, an education consultant manager. I can't tell you how much we appreciate her, many years of service and dedication to our children here in the state. She's just a wonderful person, those of you who know her as a person and not just in her current role. Would everyone please acknowledge and thank Flora for her?
Why are we here?
We weren't going to let that happen. That's why the cameras are here. They're going to be reporting that. I don't think the next person could join us infected. Okay. But Eleanor White, who's been our special ed director here at the department, has received an offer and has taken it in a new position in the EAA. She's accepted that position. I thought she was going to be here, so maybe I, now that I've started it, I better complete it. She's going to be special ed director, apparently, for the, not apparently, for the Education Achievement Authority. We want to thank her for her service here. I would just say this, that there, work needs to be done in a lot of places in the state with respect to adherence to special education rules. And I think she's committed to trying to straighten that out. I only have met the new EAA chancellor once, but seems dedicated to making some of those changes. And I think that's why she probably recruited Eleanor. So, we'll be sorry to see her go and wish her well in that, in that position, the EAA. So, wherever you may be, Eleanor, we wanted to at least acknowledge you today at the board. And apparently, she's, this is her last week, I think. This one is more joyful, in one sense, because I, you know, we have a big responsibility and maybe it'll give me a chance in either a few minutes, depending on whether a press conference across the street is done yet or not, to speak a little bit about some actions we've taken in the department. But one of the misunderstandings, I think, that I've seen in the press the last day or so, is that we're potentially not treating charter and public schools, traditional public schools, the same. And the fact of the matter is that, for the first time, the law kind of allows us, in this winter, to look at schools that need further assistance. They've been on the so-called bottom 5% for a number of years. And the law calls for us to potentially place some schools in the state reform district. All bottom, so-called bottom 5% are in the, under the guidance of the state reform office. But it's a different issue that's not been done to the state to put them into the state reform district if, in fact, they haven't improved in the last three years. And I should just say, those will be charters, traditional public, there's no distinction. So, I wanted to use the opportunity to say, what we may be doing with authorizers is very different than individual schools. The 4,000 schools are all treated separately. And that's kind of a preface to, as you know, at one of our earlier meetings, Deb Clemmons, we introduced as retiring. And she did a great job in getting us up and running in that regard and as a state reform official, state reform officer. And she, by the way, she has a cute little, I think her email's still coming up with something, remember what it says? It's really clever. Well, we'll find out, because now that I've left you hanging, it has a real clever way of, you know, deserving retirement and finally, finally getting there. So, we're very happy and appreciative of her work. We had an opportunity to have paper screening in-house. The way I hire all of these major positions is everyone in the organization gets a chance to weigh in on paper screening. We take the top 10 from there and they, I've assigned an interview committee, in this case led by Deputy Superintendent Kiesler. And then, I get the, I get two. This is something I've done for 25 years, even as a local superintendent, that you're, you're more likely to get the right candidate when you have a larger group of people looking at credentials and thinking about it and asking questions. So, I got two excellent candidates, to say the least. I almost, and just, I'm delighted to say that, in this case, I was so impressed with the background of a person who's already been in the department, by the way, but has had some experiences in, in New York and other places that I think make her a perfect candidate. So, the board's aware of this through our mid-month, but I thought I'd introduce her name and a face as Natasha Baker, who's our new state reform officer. If you'd stand up and let's welcome Natasha to the floor. And Marty, who always remembers these things, what Deb had was goodbye tension, hello pension. Very clever. Don't think about that anytime soon, I mean, the rest of you. We've got a, but Natasha's really, even in a short time, just stepped up with the whole important year, to say the least. So, we welcome you and appreciate your stepping up to this, to this important position. Classroom experience in New York City, my old alma mater, you know, I'm much older than she is, so she wasn't one of my, she's probably the granddaughter or great-granddaughter of one of my teachers. And then, I know Kathy wrote us all on this and I appreciate it, because it's really, people who serve on the state board, I think it's very unheralded. And it's not appreciated enough, kind of in, in the world we're in, of elected officials. They, folks who serve on this board are not kind of self-congratulatory types. They're not out there trying to look for other things. And so, when Kathy made us all aware that Marilyn Lundey, a former vice president of the board, passed away, I wanted to acknowledge that. And we certainly have thanked her for her service. I got to know her a bit when I was the Wayne Rees as superintendent and worked on some projects. And she was kind of a philanthropist, I think, also, in her own way, and appreciate that enough.
Very active in Detroit, in Wayne County.
Yeah. So, we, this is the call to attention, her passing and she did, we appreciate her service here on the board for all those years. I think it was from '89 to '96.
She wanted a focus on middle schools.
Is that her?
As I recall, it was one of her major interests.
And did you?
We did, for a while.
So, we've got the middle schools in good shape.
You know, I was going to wait on this, but I think the, there apparently was a press conference just at nine. And I thought it's worth potentially clearing the air and maybe saying what our action with authorizers was and was not, because there's some real misunderstandings, I think, about it. Before I do, by the way, I mean, talk about reminding ourselves of a little different issue for a moment about why it's not all about testing and I hope the feds and all the requirements change a little bit on testing over time. It's important to know if kids have met the standards, but we've certainly gotten into an era when we're, we're testing the heck out of it. And it reminded me, when I picked up my local New York Times, which is the Lansing State Journal, in my case, where I live around the corner here, and saw, knew last night, but saw again the Robin Williams tragedy or death. But I thought of Dead Poets Society right away, where you realize that's what most teachers do, is, is they inspire kids beyond the standards and get them enthusiastic about learning. And if you, I'm sure a lot of his movies are going to be on the next few days, just the nature of it. And if you get a chance, and some of the younger folks especially have not seen Dead Poets Society, I would recommend it to you. It's really, I think inspirational, why a lot of people have become teachers. But I thought, I made some notes on this while I was sitting, eating breakfast, because it was just a forum for me to understand some of where other folks have seen our decisions. So, I thought if I might, just for a moment here, we do think this is state superintendent authority. Apparently, some others, I think the Charter School Association of Probably Authorizers have a different view of that. We think it's clear. I would say this, by the way, I really respect, this is almost for any possible successor that might be listening, who wants to apply for this job. And I know you're listening, by the way. You've all told me you're watching and trying to get a feel for whether you even want to apply. One of the hardest things for me has been that, in one sense, there's certainly, you report to a board, you work for a board, yet you have your own authority. And there's always this fine line. And I want to clarify one thing, because I thought it was a bit of a, a bit overly personal, where somehow the feeling is that these actions are strictly because of conversations with either the state board or the governor's office. I say this respectfully, this, the board and the governor's office obviously have their own important authority. I had no discussions on this, on this particular decision about putting authorizers at risk with either the state board or the governor's office. And one reason is honestly that what I thought would happen, happened anyway, where there's kind of this feeling, oh, this is a partisan decision, this is based on, number one, I don't think that the board, in my observation, makes partisan decisions, to begin with. But secondly, I appreciate the fact that the board respects my own authority as state superintendent. And I'd also say this, that the irony of this decision is there's no consequences yet. I make decisions with, because I've been authorized to through this appointment, that are far more significant almost every day. Now, this isn't to minimize the way this feels to charter authorizers right now, and I'll speak to that in a moment. But to pretend that, for example, a decision I made last week that affected an appeal from Michigan State University, that has an impact immediately on ISDs, on MAISA, on Michigan State. And those kind of decisions just come with the job. You know, I, so, the reason I say that, I thought it should clear the air, because it's just not true. And I, and it's awkward at times, but I think that's proper. And I think the board today will appropriately have their own dialogue and possible action on where they think this very topic should go. And I respect that also. So, I've tried to, that's one issue, just to, just to lay that to rest. This is not partisan. I've worked, in fact, we started with this, with the authorizers in February. I would acknowledge and think I should, the good work done by the Free Press and others. You know, some of it, one could contest as more, there's different opinions on how, on pieces of that series. But this was ongoing before that. I would acknowledge that certainly the series gave us an opportunity to say, okay, let's be more thoughtful about this now. And so, we called the authorizers in and met with them. And then, in a separate meeting, met with the stakeholders. And I will accept responsibility for this, and that is that, in the final analysis, it was my call and decided that we would not pull the plug, even with my authority at this time, because what was more prudent, I think, was to, to indicate those authorizers that we think are at risk. I had a president call me, and I don't think he necessarily want me to cite, but I thought it, I really appreciated the call, because his view was, thank you for calling this to my attention and giving me an opportunity to correct that. I mean, I wouldn't want to be in a spot, this happens to be one that may be remediable. So, I think we did this in a thoughtful way. We wanted to do it in a way that wasn't a gotcha. On the other hand, if it turns out, out of the 11, there are some that cannot remediate this by the, by the time we are. I think it's my responsibility, and I think one could make a case, that I maybe should have used that earlier. But it's my responsibility to say that they can't authorize new charters. But that's not determined yet. I was a little taken back and probably shouldn't have been, you know, Marty and some others are wiser than I am on some of these issues of some of the response. So, all I would kind of say is particularly the two associations that have weighed in with some pretty pointed statements, that just take a deep breath here. We're trying to create a fair, because one thing I think that's been missed that I better emphasize today is there's some confusion about, why would they do a metric? They're not transparent about their metric. The metric is just a compilation of the top-to-bottom list that's known by everyone, that the schools have had since June, that we, in our regular practice, so I think it's tomorrow, gets announced as a statewide, you know, kind of statewide where they are. But the schools have these months in advance so that they can work over the summer to look at where they are and put plans together for the new school year, particularly the so-called bottom 5% priority schools. So, they've had these for a few months. The reason it takes us a while is appeals come in and you really can't finish that couple of thousand list until the appeals are done and, and respond that way. So, what I'm getting at is this isn't a newfangled metric. This was just a way to try to say, if you, this president even said to me that, even if you maybe don't have the authority to look at the academics on it, it's helped me think about, what's my portfolio like? And here's, so here's, I could make what I think is a very important point. It was in the press release. I think it got skirted over in some of the press conference across the street, apparently 9:00 today. And that is that we are getting the authorizers back in to help us perfect that metric and give credit for improvement. In other words, I don't know this, but I suspect that there will be some of, sorry about that, that there will be some of these that, thanks, Merz, throw that in the wastebank.
If Duncan didn't want it, it helps.
That's a reporter call.
So, I think what's going to happen is there'll be some of those authorizers that, when we work on a metric, because here's, I'll be very direct. I maybe disagreed in-house, we had some disagreement, but my final call was that some of these schools are going into the areas that have the greatest challenges, some are not. And if they actually are making a difference in improving, that should be taken into account. If they're, if, but if you're an authorizer and you have schools in areas that are very challenging and they get worse under your watch, then that's something, I think, as state superintendent, with my limited authority, very limited, it's just you can't open your charters, I think I have a responsibility to take into account. So, we did, we are, we think that's appropriate. I think you'll see a lot of these folks remediate issues that they can. We've given them a head start, to say the least. But that metric issue, I think, will be important and is deserved in this discussion to say, yeah, we're in the bottom 10%, but look at the improvement we've been making. Or, we're in the bottom 10% and for three years, they've been going this way. And if I can just be direct, I'm not going to call out the individual colleges on this, but it's, it's a little bit disconcerting for me and my role as state superintendent to see one authorizer that says, there's two schools that we are not comfortable with anymore and we're closing, and then another authorizer picks them up. It's not for me to say they can't do that. That's not within my authority. But I think that school that picked them up should understand where they are in terms of their proficiency. So, if for some reason I'm wrong and the associations, which I think in fairness, they're, they just need to take a deep breath for a minute. You know, if we had actually suspended yesterday, then maybe there'd be a little more cause. But take a deep breath, we're going to still work with you on an improvement factor. It is serious. I mean, I wouldn't pretend it's not serious. And then, one other thing, there's, there's some discussion about, well, we were, we were great last year, according to you. What happened this year? You added schools. You added some schools and it changed the nature of your portfolio. In one case, they added a school with 4,000 kids. So, that can skew the same metric. We didn't change the metric. These are the top-to-bottom metrics. If anything, we're, as I said, we're going to take the top-to-bottom, which already has some factor in it for improvement, and then we're going to add like another factor that your portfolio is continuing to improve. And that's what we want to meet with the authorizers on. So, you know, all I can say is, when the official statement from one of the organizations, we would have appreciated transparency, the transparency's there. These are the top-to-bottom schools, they've known them since, since June. I would say, in fairness, very much to the point of the president who called me, that they weren't thinking about that, at least this particular institution wasn't thinking about that, as it's something they would want to know. If I'm president of university, I'd want to know where that is. So, I'm happy if that's taking place. Excuse me for one minute here. Now, I know what you mean when you say, can't read my writing, Karen. I think they're going to add that to their process, many of them that have already responded. We're not conducting public policy by a press release. This is at risk. That's all I can say, is at risk, more to come. So, I don't, I don't judge the spirit behind the anxiety. I get that. And I hope we'll, they'll take us up on our invitation, I believe they will, to come in and help us work on a metric that adds improvement factor. We take very seriously the other pieces, which have kind of gotten skirted over. The law is very clear about transparency, for instance. So, we haven't obliged ourselves yet to deal with what's almost a second phase. But we've tried to say, well, at least the things that are currently in the law. For example, if part of transparency in the revised law, and by the way, there were improvements in that revised law that I think is worth noting, that people have reminded me of and appropriately. But as an example, the budgets need to be posted online and many are not. Now, an authorizer might say, well, that's the school's problem. All I can say is I have responsibility to the authorizer. You need to make sure you have a process in place where your schools are doing that. I mean, I had that responsibility as a local superintendent for my 35 schools. And I know that's a little different, so I could inadvertently confuse that. I just, I just think an authorizer would want to make sure that they have a process in place where those things are being followed by their portfolio of schools. And by the way, that's probably very correctable. I would think that's very remediable between now and October 22nd. That's another reason, not to just today have a gotcha and, and close down their opportunity, because some of these are, you know, they're, I'd want it to call, if I had been president of university, I'd want this call to my attention and have some time, or, or an intermediate district or others that we're dealt with here. I'm coming to an end here. Twitter feeds last night, my wife said, they're pretty hateful, by the way. They usually are. It's just anyone in positions of visibility, you know, I usually don't read the comments on an article and stupidly look at the notifications and, but the irony is, we maybe hit the sweet spot team, because the people who I'm generally categorizing as pro-charters, some pretty mean stuff, and anti-charters, some pretty mean stuff. So, if you're hated by all the above, we're probably hitting about the right thing. And, you know, just a few more points. One is that this was not done on the back of a napkin, as was indicated by one of the associations. The bottom line is, the metric is the metric that we've had in place for years. Admittedly, we're thinking about it in a different way to, to look at it as an overall portfolio. And I, I've asked, directed Deputy Superintendent Kiesler to meet with the authorizers on that additional metric that we're going to work on together. And our final call and what that should be, but I, we've been open on everything else. And I want to say this, I mean, I'm, I'm appreciative of any school, traditional or charter, especially when they go in to a neighborhood that's been challenged for years in educating our kids and trying to make that a better place for those kids. And we have successes in both the charter world and the traditional world in that respect. And should, should not let that get carried away here with some of these discussions. There are many beating-the-odd schools that are both from the charter arena and the traditional So, I hope that clarifies some of it.
Can I just note, we're not going to extend this discussion now, but we are going to come back this afternoon as part of our discussion of recommendations to legislation, Governor, of what else do we need to do about charters? So, for those who are here, because of your charter interest, come back at 2:30 and we'll have some more discussion about the situation and what we all want to improve.
Thanks, John. And we're looking forward to that. I think that's appropriate role for the state board and appreciate your weighing in on these issues. And mine's, as I said, not as broad as the state board's issues, mine's is limited, relatively limited. Okay. I'm done with that for now. So, the first item on today's official agenda is Committee of the Hall. It's a presentation on the Michigan Core Knowledge and Core Competencies for the Early Care and Education Workforce. The Michigan Core Knowledge, what I just said, provides specificity and clarity for what early childhood educators should know and be able to do in their roles, working with children, birth to five, and their families. This is an update, no, that's mine now. Sorry about that. This is an update of the 2003 document. I appreciate the leadership that Susan Broman and certainly Lisa Brewer, well, they've even have brought to this, and they're going to report to the board on this. The next step is there'll be public comment now for a period, and then the board will ask for your approval at the November, November state board meeting. Susan?
Thank you, Mike. With the creation of the Office a great start and the implementation of the tiered quality rating and improvement system, Michigan is making important improvements in the quality of early childhood services. The next step in this process is the revision update of the, and you heard Mike write, the 2003 Michigan Core Knowledge and Core Competencies for Early Childhood Care and Education Professionals. As Superintendent Flanagan noted, these standards provide a framework for what early childhood noted, these standards provide a framework for what early childhood professionals should know and be able to do in the roles, working with children and their families, in particular children birth through five. The review process has allowed various stakeholders to provide feedback and comments. It has included a dedicated work group that oversaw this entire process, focus groups, review of other states' work, as well as a review by the National Center on Childcare Professional Development Systems and Workforce Initiatives, that's a mouthful, to ensure that it follows recognized best practices. In addition, the Office of Great Start has held a number of briefings and opportunities for people to look at the work and provide comments. Again, in the next couple of months, we will continue to provide additional opportunities for people to provide comments on this body of work. Before turning the presentation over to Lisa Brewer Wallhaven, the Office Director for the Office of Child Development and Care, I would like to acknowledge two individuals who have done what I call the heavy lifting in this work. First, Robyn Zeder, from the Office of Great Start, who is the professional development specialist. She has been the primary person who has overseen all of this work, including the revisions, as well as the stakeholder involvement. Second is Lori Nixon, who works both at the Michigan Association of the Education for Young Children and the Office of Great Start. Lori has served as the chair for this entire process and the chair of the work group overseeing all of this work. Would you please join me in giving them a round of applause for their work? Lisa?
So, as we think about the Core Knowledge and Core Competencies, you'll notice that, because that's such a long title, we've abbreviated it CKCCs, so you'll see that frequently throughout this presentation. This really does provide a framework for what the early care and education workforce should know and be able to do in their roles in working with and/or on the behalf of young children, birth to five, and their families. They're professional standards that guide their work, and they're a roadmap for high-quality practices. This is a critical piece in our puzzle, as Susan was mentioning, related to us promoting children's learning and their development and helping them achieve outcomes. It also is a mechanism to create an enhanced system of professional development within the field. So, it's meeting multiple purposes. Teachers who have specific preparation, knowledge, and skills in child development and early childhood education are more likely to provide positive interactions, richer language experiences, and quality learning environments, which is what we're working towards. This visual, which I'm going to bring up all at one time, really gives you a sense of who this document is targeted for. In the left circle, you can see the direct service individuals who work on a day-to-day basis with children, whether it's in a childcare setting, whether it's in a Great Start readiness program, the variety of positions that are happening in those settings, assistant teacher, teacher, director, administrator. In the right circle, the non-direct service, this applies to those who are in the higher education because faculty use this document, professional development providers who are in the field providing opportunities, technical assistance providers, et cetera. This really helps, this visual really helped reinforce that this is a document that crosses across settings and sectors, it's not focused in one area, and that it's used by multiple individuals, regardless of where they're working or how they're supporting children and families and the early care and education staff who are working with them. It also gives those individuals specificity for what they should be doing in their roles. So, this was already mentioned, but I'm going to take you through a little bit more in detail about the history of how this document has been evolving. In 2003, there was a committee that was funded by the Frye Foundation to create the original Core Knowledge and Core Competency Document for Michigan. That document was finalized, but never really got off the ground in terms of people picking that up and utilizing it in their work. So, in 2009, we had an opportunity with the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, or the ARA dollars that were made available to states as one-time funding to improve or increase their early learning system so that children were better prepared for school. We took advantage of those dollars, and in 2013, a contractor was hired, Early Childhood Associates, to help us revise and update the 2003 document. The Early Childhood Associates, as the contractor, worked extensively with stakeholders, including the work group that Susan mentioned, as well as others. In 2013 and 2014, that work stream continued their tireless efforts to update this document, and the 14 members of that group went through each of the competencies and each of the elements to ensure that they were inclusive across all of the areas that we've looked at. The revision and review process utilized feedback from the variety of stakeholders. Those stakeholders who participate in our work streams and our professional development stakeholder group also shared this with their constituents, their members, helping us make sure that we had a large reach. One thing that we learned throughout this process was that the original document that was created in 2003 was not appealing to people. It kind of looked like a typeset document, if I'm being completely honest. So, one of the things that was done was to increase the visual appeal. So, it's now color-coded, it has a better design, it includes photographs, hoping that we make this a much more user-friendly document for everyone. We also did a review of other states' Core Knowledge and Core Competency documents. We looked at five other states to see how their documents were organized, what they contained, how they were being utilized. And there were six focus groups that centered on bringing in individuals from higher education, from two-year colleges and four-year colleges, to look at the document and give feedback. We brought in trainers and professional development providers to do the same. And then, of course, we brought in providers themselves, brought in those providers who were working in family homes, group homes, and center settings to give us their feedback. Another big element of the review and revision process was making sure that we were aligning this document to state and national standards, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that in, in just a minute. But what we learned was, people didn't want another document that they had to follow a bunch of rules for, they wanted it to really encompass and bring together everything. In addition to all of this work that was facilitated by Early Childhood Associates, the work group then took that revision and spent more time, again, really making sure that we got the feedback of the work group, feedback from other individuals in the field, and the National Technical Assistance Center, who really told us that this document was on par with the content areas that they recommend for this type of work. So, back to that alignment piece for just a minute. If you think back to the earlier visual where we had the people who were actually working in the field and then those who support those who are working in the field, one of the first crosswalks and alignment that was done focused really on those professionals who were working in the field to make sure that they understood that this was bringing together all the standards, whether they were licensing standards, whether they were standards from our quality rating improvement system, whether they were standards for quality that we use for programs, or whether they were related to early learning expectations. Again, crosswalking those and bringing those together. For the professionals who are supporting those individuals, there was also crosswalks completed. You can see the four documents that were used for that crosswalk to make sure that we were incorporating state and national levels of standards for educator preparation. Now, a little bit about that organization that I mentioned in terms of making this document user-friendly. The document is organized into eight core knowledge and competency areas. You can see those listed here. So, they're about how the children are developing, through how interactions are happening with children, to how we're observing and documenting children's growth and development, health and safety, how we're working with families, and how we're acting as professionals. Each of those competency areas are then organized into competency statements, again, making sure that individuals know what they should be able to do in their role related to each of those areas. Each competency statement is then broken into three indicators, and those indicators are developing, achieving, and extending. And those were really derived from Bloom's taxonomy, his five levels, and we thought those were important because, for those who are just entering the field and for those who are generally working directly with children every day, they're probably in that developing and achieving and working their way through those competencies. And for those who have been in the field and who are supporting those early care and education providers, they're at the extending level. So, they're really working with individuals to extend their use of these standards and framework. We could probably go on and on about who should use this document and why they should use it. We've limited the list to those that you see here. Again, for those who are working in the classrooms with children and families, this is a way for them to create a professional development plan and to track their professional growth as they grow and move in the field. For directors and administrators or supervisors, this helps them develop position descriptions for their programs, helps them evaluate staff and create professional development plans. For professional development providers, it really helps them assess their content and availability and make sure that they're evaluating professional development opportunities that are being offered. Mentors, coaches, and consultants, again, helps with planning for professional development, helps them guide reflection on what is happening. And then for the preparation programs and institutions of higher education, helps them with their course development, making sure that as their courses are being developed and individuals are being trained to enter the field, they have appropriate skills and information. Also helps with articulation. So, as people are taking training and courses, they're able to move from one area to another. The benefits of the Core Knowledge and Core Competencies, again, it's really this foundational system that creates a framework for preparation of those who are working in the field and allows them continual growth as they better support children and families. It also helps inform the development and revisions of training and technical assistance that are offered to those individuals. It also helps with curriculum or instructions that's developed from the high school level, really, through the college level to support this field. Again, I mentioned articulation. It's definitely a benefit because it helps them transfer their learning from one opportunity to another and increases staff qualifications as they moved on a career path of professional development. So, I'm hoping through this brief introduction and overview of this document, that you can see that through having this framework for the early care and education providers working with children birth to five, that it supports increasing the number of children in appropriate high-quality early learning and development programs, that it ensures that all children, birth to eight, especially those in the highest need, have access to high-quality early learning and development programs, and they enter kindergarten prepared for success. So, it aligns with the goals that you all have for young children, as well as the goals that the Office of Great Start has for young children. You also heard a little bit about this, but just to reiterate, we will continue to gather information from stakeholders across the state to ensure that there's awareness of this document and to help us think about appropriate ways to disseminate this information so that it can be used by those who are working in the field and those who are supporting those who are working in the field. We have a template up on the website currently where we're gathering feedback and information. That will go to the work stream, who will review that information and incorporate it with us bringing it back to you in November for your support and approval.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Lisa, Susan. So, this is appropriate time for any comment that might help us modify or shape perhaps a little bit of this. You have the final say, obviously, at the November meeting on approval, but if something seemed kind of in the wrong direction, we'd want to modify that now before public comment.
I don't have any suggested modifications, but I wanted to thank you all and really underscore the importance of this work. There's a lot of momentum and a lot of broad support for early childhood education as a great investment that pays off in better outcomes for kids and less cost to society, frankly. And if there is any debate, sometimes we have a little debate about what the research says about early childhood education. It seems to clearly say high-quality early childhood really works and gets those investments. Poor quality doesn't, potentially. So, this is the way we help ensure that we're delivering high quality, which works, by having great educators with the skills to make sure it works. So, this is so important to this broadly shared agenda, but I just wanted to underscore that, and thank you all for your hard work to put this, make this real. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Dan?
So, let me add my thanks. Critically important work, and work that I'm interested in, as you know. So, two kind of subjects of inquiry. One is, so you alluded to the fact that you did kind of some research with regard to what other state standards are. I'm just curious what the five states are and why you chose them. A, that's just probably idle curiosity, but maybe something available for us to learn. And second, I'm really, so this is like B, under question one, wondering about, to what extent you see any momentum across the country for something like the Common Core State Standards in the early childhood space? And so, what level of organization are you sensing or seeing, you know, in multiple states to do something that actually brings best thinking from, you know, 40 or 50 states together to put standards together?
I can answer the five states and why we chose those. Early Childhood Associates recommended those five states because they thought, one, they were similar to Michigan, and, two, they had a history of having a Core Knowledge and Core Competency Document that was accepted and utilized in their state. They were Ohio, Colorado, New York, Montana, and Washington.
Similar to Michigan in demographics, or in, like, similar to Michigan how? Just curious.
Similar in regards to some of our provider populations and programs that we offer for children and families.
What was, what was the last one?
Washington.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, just give me those one more time. New York?
Ohio.
Ohio.
Montana and Washington.
My, just to be transparent, so my hope is to go look at some of their work.
Sure.
Right? See if that happens. And any, any momentum around something like Common Core State Standards in the early childhood space?
Well, if you think about it, the standards that you approved a few months ago are in alignment with the Common Core standards.
Agreed, right. So, those are...
But I would say that one of the interesting and positive pieces of having the Office of Great Start located within the Michigan Department of Education is that there is that immediate link in understanding of how important the continuity needs to be. In other states where there is a freestanding, similar Office of Great Start, you're not seeing that level of alignment.
So, you're not saying, so in those states, they're not aligning their early childhood standards with the Common Core?
They may be, but not as, what I would call, as a basic understanding of how this all works together.
Right.
It's harder work when, when it's being done separately outside of... It's harder work when it's being done separately outside of the Department of Education.
And so I'm interpreting your remarks to also suggest then that you're not seeing much momentum around the country for, like, hey, let's all get our standards aligned with Common Core State Standards and let's do that together.
I would say that there is momentum across the country, but again, it's similar to even looking at what we were just looking at, that not all states are at the same point in their evolution in early childhood work in the state. Michigan is what I call systematically moving through the paces. Not all states are there. I'd say the movement is in that direction, but we're further ahead on a lot of these things in other states.
Second subject of inquiry, so what penalties or incentives are tied to the use of these standards? I mean, so how do these, I get that they align with, right, I mean, so you guys have done all the work to make sure that the, that you're using these as much as possible or that they're aligned as much as possible with, say, the QRIS standards or with the teacher certification exam, so on and so forth. But like in practice, what kind of teeth, you know, do these have? I mean, are you not eligible to get your license to provide early childhood care because you don't meet these standards? Are you, you know, I mean, what actually happens, if anything?
Currently, they are voluntary, but to give you an example of what we're trying to do, as Susan was talking about putting the pieces together and to continue to push and move forward, these core knowledge and core competencies would be used by everyone across the state to approve trainings that would be offered to early care and education providers. You would have to demonstrate which competencies your training met to have an approved training that providers could take. So some of those kinds of examples are next steps in terms of continuing to get others to embrace this and recognize its importance.
If you look at what has happened this last year with the Great Start readiness program tying it to a minimum three-star on the quality rating system, which of course would include looking at competencies of the professionals, you're seeing what I call a direct tie as well as this year's childcare funding being indexed in a tiered reimbursement way to three-star, four-star, five-star, so that in fact they are receiving additional reimbursement per hour based on the quality of their programs, which again relates to the quality of the staff. So the pieces are starting to, there is what I call a financial incentive to improve the quality of staff. It is not mandatory.
Right. And that indexing begins with the new fiscal year in October?
No, it already began.
Inverted beginning?
Yeah, the tiered rating system began.
Well, the rating system did. Does the index reimbursement rate?
Yeah, the tiered reimbursement began in the end of August.
Okay, right.
Or will be beginning the end of August, yeah. We had a little delay in the quickness of DHS being able to implement the changes in the software to be able to actually do that. But that also included the change from 80 to 90 hours every pay period for reimbursement for childcare, which also begins at that same point in time.
And if there's not anyone else in the queue, one other quick follow-up?
Good question.
I was going to follow you up, so go ahead.
Quick follow-up is, so any feedback on that so far?
Kind of early.
Yeah, okay. Okay. We'll come back to that one.
Thank you, Dan. Kathleen and Michelle.
Well, thank you. Well, I wanted to follow up, but you really asked the question. I was concerned about when we do these standards, how do we know they're being implemented? That's true of all the standards we do, that we do, how are they being implemented? So I got some of the answers from Dan's and your answers, so I don't, but I think the idea that we're training, we're training the providers and the staff people is the way to go.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's nice to be able to concentrate on the people who are providing the service.
Right.
Because at the end of the day, that's the most important variable.
That's really, it's very important. How we actually.
Don't get between Dan and.
Follow that up. Yeah. I just want to mention, I was asked to do an interview for NASB, for their publication, on the standards that we have for our after-school programs. And the basic question, I mean, after I told them all the history and everything, well, are they being implemented? How are they being implemented? How do you know they're being implemented? All that kind of thing. So it's on my mind.
That's a good question.
Thank you, Kathleen. Michelle.
Yeah. I always appreciate the reports you do, and I always like the, you seem to really take a very broad and diverse opinions and very comprehensive in your approach on this, and I always appreciate that. It seems really consistent with the work you do. And I was looking at, when you talk about the alignment for early educated preparation, you, I was glad to see that there was inclusion of special education professional and that area was touched. So my question is related to that. Has there been, so when someone in the, you know, in this age range, birth infant to five, a lot of times disabilities arise, cognitive disabilities, different disabilities arise during that time, what are the resources? What is sort of the approach that this, is there any changes in the approach and if, or, you know, what are they? And how are these types of children provided services or when serious sort of disabilities are identified?
So this document, and certainly we can do some follow-up to point to some specific instances in here, that would be helpful, but I think really helps providers at early education and care providers realize that there are a multitude of individuals who are working to support children and families. Gives them the ability to reach out and access resources for those children and families. So it might be early on, if the child's zero to three, it might be being able to partner with their ISD for a child who's a bit older, to make sure that they can connect those families with children and services to support. Many of those services will come into the early childhood setting and work with that early care and education provider so that they're coordinating and making it easier for the child and family. And I don't know if Susan wants to add any to that, but.
Is there any issues with financing those types of services? Yes, there are.
In particular, early on.
Yeah. So there's, there might be some need in certain communities that they might not get the services because they don't have the financial.
The entire state.
The entire state. That's a big area. Okay. Is there, well, do you have any recommendations to address that or ideas on how to address that? Or maybe I should.
More money.
More money.
Yeah.
So there should be allotted more money for those.
May I?
I think you wrote.
All right. You know, so I had a thought that I was going to share. I'm actually going to go in a very different direction, which is just to once again encourage this board to spend more time and energy on this issue. We're going to have a robust conversation, I'm sure, this afternoon about state policy with regard to charter schools. And that's an important thing, to be sure. My gut tells me, though, that having a robust conversation about state policy with regard to early childhood, as important as other things are, is at least as important as state policy with regard to charter schools if we really want to turn around, if we really want to transform our education system and outcomes for kids, particularly outcomes for kids of color and low-income kids across the state. The data all suggests that the long-term impact of high-quality early childhood is just, it's simply the best investment you can make. I mean, if you want to improve outcomes for kids growing up in poverty, and I just don't think we spend enough time on it. And I get that folks feel like, you know, everybody feels good about early childhood, but like our actions speak volumes in terms of the relative importance that we think it plays in this space. So I just want to challenge all of us to be much more diligent and much more energetic about putting this front and center on our agenda.
You know, first of all, Dan, thank you for that. And what I would suggest is help us in agenda planning because those are opportunities for us to be more thoughtful about what would be kind of a public discussion or a policy discussion. We would agree with that, and we probably have more inside work on that than the board may know, but it would help us. And, you know, I would say this, I, you saw Will in the beginning, our two-year-old grandson. It breaks my heart that the very kids you've talked about, in general, rural, urban poverty, some suburban poverty, do not have what he has in an early childhood experience. They even get, my daughter-in-law showed me this weekend, they get a daily online update at the end of the day, his progress on eight goals. And then also, like, when he peed and all that stuff, that's on there too. But it's, and then a little quick video on watching him do something. I'm thinking, this is gold. This is, and all I, I mean, I was happy, obviously, for my preschool grandkids to get this, but I'm thinking, how does everyone not have this? And then we expect the starting line to be the same by kindergarten. It's just not. So I mean, and it's a quality issue you mentioned, and it's so, with the way that some of these providers are just innovating with technology and everything else. I mean, that one just blew me away. It also made me think, by the way, a little guilt on my part, is, okay, what are we doing to make sure every K-12 kid also has some kind of feedback along those lines with the opportunities you have with technology? But it's, I would, we would love to do that. So I think it was Richard and then John, or John and then Richard, Richard and John.
Well, I guess I would urge the board to learn from experience. The High Scope study, which claimed to be the source of this doctrine of investment in early childhood education, that's what prompted us to invest a whole generation's worth in Head Start. And now people are talking as if we have no history of early childhood investment, as if there is no record of the returns. And if those who are, those who refuse to learn from history are bound to repeat it again. And one of the core issues here is, are we supplementing parental guidance of children? And we all know that the home is much more important than even poverty, measured in terms of income on the child's influence. And if we are encouraging people to put their confidence in an institution rather than in parenthood, then we are supplanting, rather than supplementing, the essential needs of children.
Thank you. I think there's John and Cath and Dan.
I don't want to have a debate about what the research says about the power of early childhood, the power of this or that. I think that is, though, an important discussion for us to have continuously. Where do we put our priorities? Where do we put our energy? What is most powerful to move the needle on achievement and outcomes, particularly for poor and minority students who have furthest to travel? I just wanted to respond. And my research friends or what the folks who have, as I've asked that same question, what's the most powerful? And I applaud, Dan, your encouragement for us to spend more time on early childhood and have more robust discussion. I believe that the most powerful moving the needle topic is teacher quality, number one, and then early childhood, number two. And so as we prioritize, which we should on an ongoing basis, where do we put our effort in improving education? Let's just continue to have this discussion about what's the biggest bang for any policy or investment buck. And, you know, we're not going to resolve that debate now, but it's a good encouragement by Dan. I just couldn't let it stand unchallenged by what is the most powerful thing that drives the needle furthest. And I believe, that's what we need to look harder at. Teacher quality's number one, early childhood's number two, everything else is third, fourth, and fifth.
Thanks, John. Kathleen and Dan.
Well, I have several points I want to make. First of all, we're talking about, the High Scope study was about high quality, strictly high quality, that involved including the parents in the education of educating their children. So that's, that's the point you're making here, as far as I understand it, that this would provide high quality, having the trained people to provide the services will make it high-quality. Head Start was not always high-quality, it was more like childcare or something, it was not all uniformly high-quality. So that's, that's what we're talking about. We're trying to make the, move the needle, if you want to call it that, to have high quality. And the high quality in early childhood also includes educating the parents. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, we're talking apples and oranges, and I think we all agree that early childhood is critical. And at one time, a number of years ago, we had five task forces, and we had five areas that we thought were critical. The first was early childhood. The second was teacher quality. Third was administrator principal quality. The fourth was technology, and the fifth was integrating schools and communities, involving the community and the parents and everybody. And all of those are still critical. I don't know how we prioritize one over the other. We need the whole package. And I, we're not supposed to have this discussion right now, I guess, but I had to say that because we had, there were five areas, and they're still five areas, so.
And they will always be.
But the, I keep, want to emphasize that we're talking about trying to get early childhood education to be high-quality, not just daycare.
Or babysitting.
Or babysitting, right. That's what I was describing as daycare, I guess, yeah.
I think it's healthy to challenge each other. I mean, I think that's what this should be, so I appreciate the discussion very much. Dan, you may want to follow that.
Indeed, certainly can't leave the suggestion made by my esteemed colleague, Li.
Which one is esteemed?
All of you.
The one that steamed him.
All of you are esteemed, but indeed, I was steamed by Dr. Zile's remarks. So I.
Esteem to esteem.
Yes. I don't think anyone here is making an argument for mandatory early childhood, like, education, like, you have to enroll your child in this, over here in this institution, the way that we talk about K-12 work. And so I would push back quite a bit on the notion that we're somehow supplanting family care for institutional care, right? Every family gets a choice to make, and if you are able to provide a high-quality environment for your child as an infant or toddler, then by all means do so. Sadly, regrettably, there are many families who find that very challenging for reasons of economics, for reasons of family circumstance, for all sorts of other reasons. And in those cases, as a community, we have decided to provide care for those children. And when we are going to spend our public dollars in that manner, I think the expectation is that we do so in ways that are smart. So let's get to the second point, which is the suggestion that early childhood education is somehow not a smart investment, based on the data. So I couldn't disagree more. I just, you keep pointing to one study, frankly, and there are many, many, many other studies which suggest quite the opposite. And in fact, the study you point to suggests that washout occurs by like third grade, right? So you don't see the result of high-quality early childhood education in elementary and middle school. But you do see it long-term. So we don't know why, right? And heaven forbid that we not understand why that happens, but the truth of the matter is that the high-quality early childhood education, by the time you get to adulthood, has all sorts of positive outcomes, including higher graduation rates, including higher income rates, including lower incarceration rates for those adults. So I would encourage you to check the data, I mean, exactly what you suggested, and let's not be doomed to repeat mistakes in policy that are based on ideological notion. Let's actually check the data and make good policy, in this case, expand early child, high-quality early childhood education, particularly for the kids who benefit most from it, so that we're not paying exorbitant costs down the road as a result. Let's actually check the data and make good policy, in this case, expand early child, high-quality early childhood education, particularly for the kids who benefit most from it, so that we're not paying exorbitant costs down the road as a result of poor policy decisions that we make that impact young children.
Richard, and then I'd ask, we try to wrap it up to get to our next item.
I will just point out that Head Start, which was sold under the enthusiasm for the High Scope Study, included the parental involvement components and all the things that we claim we're going to get right the second time around. The current generation of school-to-prison graduates have benefited from this generation of, of Head Start programs. These are facts, and I hope that we can proceed with our eyes wide open and not follow the same path that folks did a generation ago, pouring millions of dollars into ineffective programs.
Well, maybe one thing to get at these points would be, if you think so, we could decide it, agenda planning, but might be helpful to just have a presentation and discussion about research and what's there, what's, and then follow this up. I mean, it's health, this is important. This is important, and we could and should challenge each other, but maybe we try to bring those and even can suggest, take suggestions from board members about what would be the most, because we should, we should look at that in order to make our, our policy decisions, for you to make your policy decisions, and that, that's a thought. We can talk about next agenda planning if you'd like.
We do agree on that, at least.
Yes, we do. So, we're good for now on that? Thanks. Thank you, guys. And we're going to move on to the presentation of, to John's point, actually, on his number one, which he wasn't sure if that, well, which is John's. The presentation of the 2014 Educator Preparation Institution Performance Score. We do this every year, as you know.
Yes.
Let me let Joseph, Flora, and Leah take a moment to come down and board members' decks. Since this was John's number one, we're going to give it just a moment to let him come back before I take it off. I think an idea would be to have interim music come in and just flood the place with calming.
Do you want me to sing?
Yeah, well, no. Oh, you don't want to go that far. It's actually an idea, you know, you could have these like.
He's singing? He's scared of what I might sing.
Just going to give two members a moment to come back.
Well, I know a lot of little kids' songs.
John, since you declared this as your number one, I thought we were going to make sure you're, I want to clarify the number one thing, too. So, here's the deal, you know, in, a year ago, in 13, we promised to bring this back to you now, because this was the time that, a year ago, we presented to the state board kind of the revisions to the EPI Performance Score metrics. So, I think I don't do as good a job sometimes in helping folks understand. We do promise these in advance, they do come, we're, I think, pretty religious about that. And then it was agreed upon at agenda planning. And those, so it's not a surprise. Those revisions were implemented over the past year. The result are these final performance scores that'll be presented to you today. We've worked on them a lot, particularly these folks and their team.
Thank you.
We also reviewed it at some length at Supers Group meeting. So, I'd like to, the next steps, by the way, is we'll report these EPIs, identify it as high-risk or low-performing to the U.S. Department of Ed, and that's per the Higher Ed Act requirements. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to the team.
All right, thank you. We're glad to be back with us. I think we appreciated your feedback when we, when we came in, I think it was May. And we, I want to say thank you to the team. OPPS staff have done a fantastic job with this. This has been a heavy lift. The revision happened very quickly, but it was done with very high quality. I just want to say that. I think it's, it speaks well to the quality of staff that we have in OPPS. With that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here again, to present this information to you, and also recognize Leah and the team, as Joseph has mentioned, for the work that's gone into doing this. And it's very thoughtful, they've worked with our EPI colleagues in terms of having them to come together to take a look at what we're, we were doing. And we have been bringing this to you to, since 2007. And we're very happy about the revisions. We think it's a much more improved system of taking a look at our institutions and holding them accountable for producing quality educators. So, I'm going to turn it over to Leah because she's doing the PowerPoint today and has the bulk of the presentation.
I drew the straw for the presentation. Okay, as Mike mentioned, this is a requirement of Title II. We are required, as a state agency, to identify and assist teacher preparation programs that are not performing at a satisfactory level. We create a list annually that identifies low-performing and at-risk-of-low-performing institutions. All of the other institutions are identified as satisfactory by default. Also, as Mike mentioned, we brought this back in August of 2013, and at that time, we talked about why we wanted to revise the Preparation Score, and I'm just going to run through those reasons to remind you, because it's been a little while. We wanted to pervert, preserve and strengthen multiple measures methodology. We also wanted to better align the score to current priorities and policy direction. It needed updating, we hadn't done that in some time. We wanted to consider the ongoing feedback we'd heard from our stakeholders, both from K-12 and our educator preparation institutions, about other measures that they'd like to see included in the score. And we wanted to leverage new ways to gather data, because we had new data, and one of those components that you'll see here are the effectiveness ratings that are assigned by the K-12 schools. We included that as well. When we brought you this information back in August, we focused on three goal areas: content and pedagogy, continuous improvement specific to MDE priorities, and effectiveness in the classroom. And this is the kind of default weighting for these three categories. We did apply kind of a scale later based on size of the institution, but this, it starts with 50 and 20 and 30 for each of these categories. These three goals were measured for this score using three data sources. We used MTTC assessment data, and that assessment data, we use a three-year aggregate pass rate. It's in the content areas only, and it is the test taker's best attempt. For survey data, we looked at survey data from both the teacher candidates and the candidate supervisors from the institutions. And then we looked at educator evaluation data. So, just a little bit of what we saw from the data sources first, before we actually look at this year's Performance Score. In the EPI supervisor survey, we looked at four main areas. And for this year, we took old survey, we kind of matched it to our new goals. This year, we'll be deploying an entirely new survey for our institutions and our candidates. And right here, the EPI supervisors, you can see, were pretty satisfied overall with how they thought candidates were prepared. The lowest in this section was in technology, 80%. In the highest, 100%. There was a little variation in between there with diverse learners at 88% and learning environments and data use at 86%. So, what that means is that EPI supervisors, on average, felt that 96% or so of their candidates were prepared in all of these areas. Why this is interesting is because then we look at the candidate results, and you see a pretty big discrepancy in how the candidates felt they were prepared in some of these areas, specifically in technology and diverse learners. You'll notice there are a couple additional categories on this one as well. We weren't able to measure those on the EPI surveys. So, the last two real-world problems and high-quality learning experiences, we could only garner from the candidate surveys. The next set of surveys will include those for the supervisors as well.
A little quick clarification. So, we're seeing lowest and highest by EPI. So, the highest EPA got 100%, the lowest EPA got the green bar in the.
Correct.
It's interesting.
Very interesting. The educator evaluation results were pretty hard to put on a graph for you, so I wanted to just bring a few of these main points. Overall, educators were 94%, on average, 94% effective, okay, when we sorted them by institution. The N size, when we try and attribute the teachers and their first three years of teaching back to an institution, is anywhere from 2 to 1,555. So, it's very hard to compare the efficacy of an institution that had two of these to one that had 1,555 of these. So, I didn't want to put them on a graph, not really a fair comparison, but it is included in their Performance Score. We do look at 2, and we look at 1,555. We try and figure out some way to accommodate, and that's where the weighting comes into play for this particular component. The range of effectiveness as attributed to the institutions was between 76% effective and 100% effective. Institutions fell within that range. When we look at the MTTC results by content areas, when we look at best attempts and a three-year aggregate of candidates, this is what we have for kind of our high-performing content areas, and we drew the line at 80%. So, anything at 80% or above, we would consider high-performing. And as you can see, we have a lot in this range. You'll have to excuse all the acronyms on there, but in order to try and squeeze them onto one chart, I had to do some abbreviating. Speech and music are at the top, reading specialist is at the bottom, at 80%.
Those critical ones, the reading is, and the music, they might have three teachers or something, they're all good.
This is actually the candidates' results. So, these are teacher preparation students in the programs, when they're exiting the program, they take their content exams, and these are the results of the three years of those exams.
And these are best-of scores?
Best-of scores. And we only looked at, this is also important, we only looked at programs that had a size of 200 or greater. So, anything, the tiny, tiny programs, we didn't put in this chart right here. Yes?
If you could just give me, or give us some of the acronyms, what is ECE?
Early Childhood Education.
Really? Okay, so then EL, ASD, LD, learning disabled, math, high school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. English as a second language, CI?
Cognitively impaired.
Okay. Math, elementary, GC? Oh, good, I actually have a companion.
Ah. I got to think about GC, yep.
ZS?
That is the new early childhood endorsement that is combined with special education content.
Okay, and PS?
Physical science.
Okay, just because it came after ZS, I thought it was special. And this, is this EI or?
Yes.
And that is?
Emotionally impaired.
Okay, thanks.
Pretty happy I got all of them but GC, and I'll come up with that one. All right, moving forward. So, here we have, now remember, we only took the ones that were 200 students or above in a three-year period, so our bigger programs, low-performing content areas. And as you can see, they're not drastically low, but they are below the 80%, and that's why low is in quotes. Kind of, it's below 80, not necessarily great concern.
And EL here is?
Elementary.
And the last one, is that, what's INT?
Integrated Science Elementary.
Integrated, okay. And there is, oh, it said math elementary, okay, thanks. Oh, no, that's not math.
Integrated Science is the lowest performing content area?
In elementary, above 200, yes. All right. So, now, we're going to talk about the 2014 Performance Score. So, that gave you a little glimpse of the data that we used when we were looking at the score and trying to figure out how to put all of that together to determine how effectively institutions were preparing our students. What we did then is we took all of that data, we brought a group of K-12 educators and education preparation institution representatives, and we conducted a standard-setting process. We did a data review of all of this. We did our best to mask the institutions' identities by putting some dummy data and dummy institutions in there, so they wouldn't be recognized. And we went through a process of standard-setting to determine a cut score for this year for at-risk and low-performing. Okay? In your board packet, you had our technical manual. Oh, fingers crossed that that was going to work, and it did. It looks like this, so you'll recognize it later. You may have already had an opportunity to look through it. It is 56 pages, and it explains how the standard-setting process occurred, if you'd like to hear more about that in depth. It talks about all of the different score components and how they were calculated, and then how we added them all together to get the final score. And I'll go through a little bit of that, but really, this document probably will answer all of those questions in depth. And if you have specific questions, I'll do my best to answer them today, but I actually might need the support of the technical manual as well. So, at the standard setting, let me catch up here. The stakeholder team identified three institutions whose data fell below the cut for at-risk, and those three are identified right there: Concordia, Mary Grove, and Rochester.
Just to call attention to, this is part of a lot of our standard practices across the board, to call things at-risk. It's not meant to be more than that.
The team did not. I'm sorry, Mike.
Including today's issue if I wasn't subtle enough.
The standard-setting team did not identify any institution as low-performing based on the data that they were provided for this year's score. Okay? That is something that is new, and that actually changed the way that we did business moving forward, and I'll talk about that a little bit. First, we're going to take a look at, in your, also in your board packets that you received, you had an appendix B, and this is each institution's individualized score report, which is also not something that we have done and brought to the board before. And it's beautiful. Phil Chase and his team did a lot of the work on this Educator Preparation Institution Performance Score, and we borrowed some help from our composition team that does our assessments to help us make these very nice reports for institutions this year. So, we're pretty excited that they get to see things in a way that they never had before. Up here, I have Adrian's score report, and we're just going to take a look at it a little bit, so when you look through each of the institutions later, you'll be able to recognize some of the key components. Up here at the top, you have the date, which is important, so next year, if these look very similar, we'll know who's we're looking at. We have Adrian College, so the institution name. We have a little bit of narrative here that explains this report. And then over here, you have their MTTC score, their survey score, and their educator eval score, which is abbreviated as EFF for effectiveness. If you carry those kind of raw scores down, although they're not actually raw, but they're, for the purposes of this report, you carry them through, and you'll see down here, the new scores by goal area. Remember, we talked about we're measuring three goals: content, pedagogy, MDE priorities, and educator effectiveness? So, you'll see that 70% of the, of the Goal One score is comprised of MTTC data, and 30% is comprised of survey data. All right? So, we have multiple measures for these goal areas where we can. Goal Two, 100% of that is from survey data for this year, and for Goal Three, 100% is from the ed eval data. Right below that, you'll see the weighting that was applied for these, and I'm going to kind of make this bigger so we can all see that. Right down here, you'll see the weighting that was applied. The weighting varies by the size of the institution, and by size, we use the number of teachers that they had effectiveness labels for. So, remember, I said that was 2 to 1,555? That's our biggest spread. So, we lowered the weighting for institutions that were smaller, and we raised it. And if you, on page two of these reports, it will show you the different weighting schemes. we use. So, for this institution, we use the 50, 20, 30. For tiny institutions that had very few educators, we went as low as 0 percent weighting for Goal 3.
I do want to clarify there, it's not tiny institutions. It is institutions that have a small percentage of their candidates that got an effectiveness score.
Yep.
A small percentage of the...
A small percentage of their candidates who were in their first three years of teaching that got an effectiveness score. If it was a very small proportion of the, of the candidates that left the institution that actually got effectiveness labels that we could tie back to them, we felt like that was, we needed to downweight that because of the inability to make very strong conclusions about that from the small sample that we got from that institution.
And we are looking for ways to strengthen that so we can get as many educators in that group as possible. So, after the weighting is applied, it gives an overall score over here. So, Adrian's overall score this year was 88. And if you look on each of the stems, you can see the, I'm going to make this a little smaller. Right here's your key. The highest score on each stem by any institution, so in this case, it was 93.5. The mean score, which in this case was 87.8. And the lowest score, which for this year was 81.1. Okay? So, you can kind of see where the institution falls in the range on each of these stems, which is a nice touch. Over here, you'll see in 2013, Adrian had a satisfactory rating. On 2014, they met the cut score, which resulted in a satisfactory rating for this year. And I also want you to notice these little bubbles right here. Let me make those little bubble bigger for you. Green is good, and that number zero is going to be important when I show you the next chart. All right? So, last year, they were a green zero. This year, they are also a green zero because they met the cut score. Okay? Repeat that 33 times for the other institutions.
While you're pausing, those potential candidates looking at this job for next year, here's another example. I mean, I had a guy say to me, "Well, it's like a ceremonial job, right?" Not really. This is, so, I mean, these really are issues that I, I'm glad the board's seeing, sees them all the time, but it really has something to do with the work that we do in the department that often isn't as visible.
So, two slides ago, I said that that one cut score gave us the opportunity to do something different. And this is where I'm going to talk about that a little bit. We really also wanted to, associated with each of these institutions' status, we have a series of technical assistance that we provide and corrective actions that the institution are responsible for. What we have seen in previous years is that by every year, giving them satisfactory, at-risk, or low-performing status based on a cut score makes that very volatile. So, one year, they were satisfactory. One year, they were at-risk. The following year, they were satisfactory, then they were low-performing. It made us very difficult to provide support to the institutions and very hard for them to make changes to their programs that would have long-term effects when we moved them in and out of those technical assistance and corrective actions. So, what we were able to do this year with the one cut score where nobody was identified as low-performing and only a few institutions were identified as at-risk, was move to a corrective action system that was a progression over time. This is also in your packet, so I'm going to flip over to what you will see and what you have seen in appendix D. And this explains the progression of our institutions. So, remember, I said that zero green bubble was going to be important? Here is where you are if you have a zero green bubble in the system. You are satisfactory. You have no years of falling below that cut score data is what that means. Every year that you don't meet the cut score, you will move through the system. You'll go to satisfactory 1, which is a warning. You'll go to at-risk 2, and then at-risk 3, low-performing 4, and so on. You move, you progress through the corrective actions. Every year that you have a positive data, you'll, you are above the cut score established by a standard-setting committee, you will progress back positively in the opposite direction. So, you would move from at-risk 3 to at-risk 2, at-risk 2 to 1, 1 to 0, so on and so forth. This way, when we put in some supports when an institution is at-risk in their first year, we can keep those supports for at least a minimum of two years. Over here, it explains that. That is the default. One stipulation that we have set forward is if we have an institution that is, let's say, way over here in their fifth year, low-performing 5, we may not require them to complete all of these successive years of positive data to move out of the system. Oh, no, don't restart. Then I'd be holding things up and pointing from the front of the table. So, what we have done is we basically reserved the right to say, "It may take you several years to get down to the lowest area of low-performing. It may not take you as many years to get out if you're making significant progress." Okay? And each of these narratives talks a little bit about what may happen in these phases. It used to be very prescriptive. We're also moving toward a very kind of unique system. There are only 34 of them. We can actually look at them pretty discreetly, and offer them the technical supports and corrective actions that are specific to the reason why they're identified rather than what used to be a very prescribed set of actions. Okay? So, for this year, here is kind of a glimpse of the status of corrective actions for institutions. In your packet, this is appendix D, and you have all of the institutions. On this particular slide, we only included the ones that are, that changed status. Everybody else is green 0 and has been green 0. Okay? So, these are the relevant ones for today's conversation. You'll see Baker last year was at at-risk level 2. This year, because they were above the cut score, they are now in satisfactory 1. And I'll just give you a second to take a look at the change in the status. We gave you 11 and 12 just for historical perspective. We actually only use 13 and 14 to determine this year's status.
And I think, I think the important thing here is that we really have been thoughtful, and thank you to OPPS staff for this, around how do we make this much more of a predictable enterprise for, for our EPIs? How do we make sure that we're able to provide them supports ongoing? Because we did have some cases where people closed a low-performing program, but it didn't necessarily take care of systemic issues, but they got out of at-risk. So, this allows us to continue that. It allows us to have much more stable ratings and provide them the supports. And I think it serves both the EPIs and the department much better to go about it in this, in this manner than how we have in the past.
And I think it's important to note that this year's score results and several different corrective actions on here. So, in the instance of Baker, they actually were one step higher because they were above the cut. And in the instance of Mary Grove, they are actually one step lower because they were below the cut. So, that's where you'll see the transitions on this slide.
Are we ready to move on?
No, I didn't.
Richard, not Dan.
Yeah, I didn't quite understand the, the green circles for Mary Grove. It's, they're listed as at-risk here, but on that chart, they've got greens for 2013, 2014.
Yeah. So, this is the difference between, when we first wanted a standard setting, we had thought about this being the same way we had done it in the past, where based on one year's data, you are either at-risk or low-performing. When we saw that none of those institutions were low-performing, we had an opportunity to rethink how we're going about this corrective action system. So, now, from here forward, we're just going to say you met the cut score or didn't on the data, just one cut score on the data. And then, you progress through a system to get to at-risk and low-performing. So, the fact that we had zero schools in low-performing kind of triggered our ability to think differently about how we would do this, this progression. So, there is a disconnect, a little bit of a disconnect between the standard-setting process and where we ultimately ended up, but I think it ended up being a positive thing. That means that you can't jump directly from low-performing to satisfactory in one year or satisfactory directly to low-performing. It allows you to progress across that and make things more stable for institutions. So, that's the disconnect you're seeing, but I think it was a fortuitous disconnect that allowed us to stabilize things.
So, specifically in Mary Grove's instance, they were satisfactory last year. So, if you look at the progression chart, they would be on this first step, satisfactory 0. They did not meet the cut score, so they progressed one level, which still puts them at satisfactory, but they're one step from at-risk. But...
Cassandra and Melody.
To his point, though, on slide 12, you have them listed as at-risk. I think that's where the confusion's coming to play.
Right. So, that is, in the standard setting, we had, we had, we had anticipated that based on a single year's data, you would be identified as at-risk or low-performing. So, when the standard-setting panel came through and did this, they identified these three institutions as at-risk. What we did is we, we looked at that and saw an opportunity to do things differently and stabilize things. So, the standard-setting panel went around, went in this direction, and what we said is, we're just going to treat it as one cut score. We're not going to call it at-risk or low-performing if you're above or below that cut score. We're just going to say you're above the cut score. You had, you had good data, you had poor data in a given year, and then that progresses you along the continuum. So, it's, it, there is a disconnect there, but we think it was fortuitous in that we don't have to, based on a single year, single year of data, move you directly from the top category to the bottom category or from the bottom category to the top category.
So, are they satisfactory or at-risk?
They are sat, they did not meet their, they did not meet the cut score this year. Therefore, they progressed one step on the progression.
But they're still satisfactory?
But they're still satisfactory because they're that, they're in that first step. And number one, we still consider kind of a warning. You don't have any corrective actions that are required at that point. So, yes.
And Mary Grove is the anomaly here. And one of the agreements that we had made with the institutions midstream was that we would not progress anybody negatively in the system of corrective action based on this score because it was new and we were piloting some of the data in here. And so, it actually worked that while Mary Grove was below the cut for at-risk, we just moved them the one step, and that would put them in at-risk if they had another year of data.
Melody, then Kathleen and Eileen.
I actually have two questions. First, I was just wondering with those surveys, if those were taken at the end of a student's coursework before they student-taught or if it was after the entire experience?
So, currently, it's after the entire experience.
And then, that leads to my second question, which is, how much say does the state have in how long a student teaching experience should be? Because I know, you know, comparing Michigan State University, where they have a full year of student teaching, to other institutions that may have shorter amounts of time, and just the importance of that direct student contact and, you know, the experience of, you know, what I call being in the trenches and going through that. Because you can teach a lot of the theory, but as long as you don't see it in practice for a certain period of time, I feel that that could really influence a student-teacher's experience overall. So, I've always wondered how it works to know, you know, that certain institutions have this full year where they see a school year from beginning to end and get to see all that classroom management put into place in the beginning, as opposed to an institution who, you know, has somebody come in in January and it's done by March.
Right now, it's currently a minimum requirement of six weeks, but we would, oh, I'm sorry, 12 weeks.
Okay, 12 weeks.
Sorry. 12 weeks. And, but we would like to change that. That's actually in one of our categories for educator effectiveness initiatives over the next several years, is to lengthen the amount of time for your student teaching experience as well as broaden it and develop standards for what should occur during that time.
As we move to a more clinical model of teaching, that's what we would hope to do. The student teaching, the length of the student teaching is a minimum that's set in administrative rule, a minimum of 12 weeks. So, institutions have always had the option of making the student teaching a year or any longer. It is right now pretty much a semester for most of the institutions. There may be one other that does it for a year outside of Michigan State, but Michigan State is the one we know that does have a year-long clinical experience.
And was your question also about when we actually surveyed the teachers?
Yes, she did, yeah, she did answer that, that it's after.
But our plan is to change that.
Our plan is to expand the surveys. We would actually like to ensure that the K-12 classroom teacher completes the survey. We'd like to do, oh, we'd like to do a year out, a year-out survey for candidates that have, that are one year from their experience to see how that changes, how they feel about their, their development.
Of course, we all know it does. Everything's great, you're going to graduate, woo, throw your thing up in the air, and then a year later, you go, "Oh, my God." And that's why we saw some of the difference in the survey results, that the way you perceive yourself as an EPI versus the way the candidate sees themselves. But that's even without that delay. So, I mean, part of this, I, now, that's easier said than done because they can go all over the world. So, you know, that's a little bit of the challenge runner to just suddenly say, "What's it like a year out, five years out?" To try to track folks. But the spirit behind it is, you really need to know that. How are you, I mean, I have anecdotal evidence about my own daughter who went through state also and is a current teacher, and I would say, without putting words in her mouth, that, you know, technology was an issue she felt like she could have been better prepared on, how to infuse that in her instruction. Knowing how to use technology is different than how to incorporate it in your teaching, as you know. So, I, but I think that's our goal. It's just not as easy as it may sound because they're suddenly scattered and how are we going to voluntary at that point? But we're going to, that's our goal. And I didn't want to add that to it. And I think Kathleen was next, and then Eileen.
Oh. Now, I forgot what I was going to say, so go to somebody else.
Eileen, please.
In slide 12, actually, I'm thrilled with this, and I have a couple of comments. One is on dissemination, making sure that parents and children can get to this information as they choose where they might want to go to school. But on slide 12, the infamous slide 12, UVM Flint...
I guess.
My question is special. I got the jackpot today.
UVM Flint is not identified on that list. They've moved up from, from low-performing to at-risk. Can you address your thinking on that, how that works internally? And then, the second question, because this is a federal mandate to have this system, is there a way to require or urge the ed schools to have this link on their website for, for our website? Is there a way to get the information to guidance counselors? You know, how can we disseminate the information? This is very hard work, and any EPI who's doing well will want to publicize it. But the hard part is for, for the EPIs that are making changes and adjustments, and it should be that there is no opportunity later on for buyer's remorse. Children and their families should have the opportunity to think this through before they start. Two big questions.
Okay. So, dissemination to the general public, it'll of course be on our website. It's on the board website right now. It'll be on our offices' website for consumers. But the real intent of this score moving forward, what we hope to accomplish this year, and we had to bump because development is pretty time-consuming and costly, is a dashboard approach where it would be very apparent and candidate-friendly, and they could click in and they could look at assessment data. They could look at all of this data in a way that was more user-friendly than I think even the reports that we've published for the institutions. So, long-term approach, we'd like to do that. Short-term approach, it's available online, and certainly, we'd encourage anybody we spoke to to go look at the individual program data when they're trying to decide programs. They don't often call us for that kind of advice.
Ideas, Eileen? Ideas along those lines that you have?
Well, you know, I'm thinking of the channels that we've got to get the word out. And I would, if I were trying to become an urban educator, and I knew that there was a program that specialized in that, but that it was struggling, I'd be asking, you know, "How's it making improvements? Is it going to end up being the top program as I enter it?" Because that could be, you know, with, with things that we're learning right now. I'm trying to make more sophisticated, sophisticated teacher consumers out of this, which is unfair of me, but I know how many of them aren't being employed in Michigan, and I'd love to have our ed schools be the absolute tops. So, being urged to do that by, by kids coming to college is as effective or better than anything we can do in a regulatory way. So, I, you know, I wish, I wish I knew the guidance counselors organization, anything that we could do to get the word out, that'll make sense to me.
That's a good idea.
We can get that out to them. You did have the question about UVM Flint.
Yes.
They met the cut score.
Okay.
Therefore, they, they get a minus 1 on their phase. So, they went up the, the progression. So, they, they were at-risk, what was it?
No, they were, they were at low performing.
They were at low performing. Now, they're at risk because they, they progressed up because they met the cut score this year.
But they are not on this particular slide because this is only the three institutions that were below the cut as the standard setting. So, it's a little bit different than the actual end result, which was here.
So, I, I hear you on this, that the cut score is the determining factor. But for me, as a consumer, I'd want to know if the school that I was going to had been climbing static and whether they were still at a lower level than I would like.
Mm-hmm.
You know, kids don't actually enter teacher prep, educated prep programs for the first two, you know, it takes you to year three.
Right.
So, there's plenty of time here. and whether they were still at a lower level than I would like. You know, kids don't actually enter teacher prep, educated prep programs for the first two, you know, it takes you to year three. So there's plenty of time here for somebody to adjust. And if they're looking at, for example, Wayne State in a specific area that they're not strong in, or that they are strong in and they live in Detroit, then that's going to be their choice. But if they got a scholarship to someplace that was really excelling at something that was outside the geographic area, you know, they should know that.
And that's what we hope to do with this chart, which I think is the best one from an easiest-to-read, from a student perspective. And if you have suggestions for improvement, we'd love that.
I like that, I just was looking at the-
And we put multiple years so that we could, you know, show that even though they were green over here, that there was some history in their performance.
Craig, and then Kathleen, and then Dan.
Did you consider the factor of student achievement?
The factor of what?
Student achievement.
The K-12 student achievement is built into their educator evaluation.
It is?
Yes.
So what do you use? MEEP?
So, that's, that's actually a difficult question because it varies from district to district. Right now, we don't have a very, we don't have anything that is standardized in any way, really, around educator evaluations, that it will be changing with the passage of some bills that we hope will pass later on, that there will be more definition around how much has to be based on student growth. And we actually made the decision not to tie student growth directly to an institution, but to hold the institutions accountable for the same things that their candidates are held accountable for when they leave, which is the overall evaluation. Kind of the whole of teaching, the classroom practice, the growth that they experience in the classroom. So we tied it to the evaluations that the teachers receive once they leave, rather than the individual student growth, because that's included in there. But it is more of a holistic approach toward incorporating student growth and the rest of teaching practice into the evaluations that these EPIs receive.
So based on the labels that are in the law?
Right.
And Craig, as you know, that got punted for one year in terms of the legislation. But as that stabilizes, as things like spring testing and all these other things kind of finally come to pass and connect the dots, then you can see where, we didn't want to take the position that it wasn't already respectfully done in the law to give a percentage on growth, and then another percentage on actual other things that the principal and others thought were important. And that's, that was the point. It incorporates it, but aligns it with whatever the law ends up determining when this thing is finalized, on what those percentages are. So, I mean, wouldn't it, maybe you could just speak, if you would, a little bit about the practicality of that this year?
Now, the practicality of that this year is that when we looked at the percentage that each individual district requires to be based on student growth, it's pretty variable across the districts. We do get a survey every year from every district, talking about the percentage of the different factors that go into evaluations, and it is variable, but it is significantly higher than it has been in the past. So in almost every district, there is a significant amount of student growth that goes into the educator evaluation. So we do have a sense that there is a significant amount of student growth that goes into this EPI performance score that we've put out.
That'll be statewide at some point.
Yep.
And then it'll be the same. Because otherwise, you have the, kind of the disadvantage from an EPI's point of view of where your candidates happen to be. If it's not finally stabilized in one way, 40%, whatever the thing works out to be. So this, all of these things are in conjunction, I would say it's fair to say, with an EPI group that's finding this helpful, to move in this direction on the number of things that you mentioned today. Not at odds. I think Craig was there, Kathleen, and then Michelle, and I'm sorry, Dan. Kathleen, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Well, I wondered if, since this is a national federal requirement, have you looked at how other states set up their systems? And how does this compare to other states?
I am happy to report that we appear to be on the forefront of what we're doing with some of our pieces of the score, and the corrective actions and the technical assistance that support it.
It's, but you have looked at other states to see what-
We have. Some, some don't appear to publish it at all. Some have, there is a lot of, I guess, a broad range from across the 50 states. And we haven't looked at all of them, but we've tried to look at the ones that really seem to have made progress on this. And I think we are one of the first to use the educator evaluation data in our performance score. And to be able to look at some of the measures that we're looking forward to in the future to add to the performance score.
Let me add that Louisiana was one of the states that was kind of like out on the forefront of doing this. And then there were, there was a group of southern states, and I think it included Georgia and Alabama and a couple others, that were doing some things where they looked at multiple measures, not in this way. You know, so there were, there were some other states that, when we initially did this, we kind of took some of that information and some of the methodology for how they were doing it, but none of them are doing anything like this.
And one of the things that we're doing that's unique, that I think also is important, is that we prioritize what our goals were, and then aligned the data to those goals, rather than just looking at data sets to determine effectiveness.
Well, it certainly seems like it's a step forward from a previous system. And did I understand correctly that you have worked with the EPIs on this? Do they feel that this is a fair system? Or they think it's too oppressive, or was-
Well, so in the beginning, when we were talking about revision of the score, we had many, many focus groups. We had large group, we had small group, we had a lot of feedback on what should be included, what shouldn't be included. They are happier about some components than they are about others. And I'll use the educator evaluations as an example. There is such a broad range of what's happening in the K-12 institutions. They are uncomfortable with being held accountable for that in a sense of preparation right now. And most of them are, we're actually hoping to get them on board to help us advocate for kind of a state-level reset of requirements, so we'll even out that component of the score. Not a lot of complaint about survey data, although with the year-out survey, there's some concern that we're going to be able to garner enough candidates to give us good feedback because they're gone now, and so it's kind of hard to get them to respond back, so we're working on that. And MTTC data remained pretty static, so they are, we're used to that component. But I think there's always room for improvement. We always value their feedback. We're always going to have a wide variety of responses. Change is hard.
And do know the yin and yang of this. I mean, on the one hand, it's human nature. You know, it's not like we wake up in the morning and say, ooh, find new ways to hold me accountable. And then on the other, so they're going to always kind of be there. The local districts are, want pressure on them because they feel that they're getting teachers that are not prepared. Now, it's not, it's somewhere in between there. I mean, your excuse as a local district can't be, well, you know, if they were just prepared better. I mean, what we find in some of our work with both groups is, there's really truth to this cycle. That is, that if teachers were prepared better, then students would learn more by the time they got to the teacher prep institution. So you know what I mean? There's this thing about, well, you know, if we had them better prepared when you brought them in from K-12, well, the locals would say, if you actually produced better teachers, we'd be able to produce better results by the end of 12. And it's a little bit of both. So it's part-
I just wondered if they think that this is a way for them to improve their practices? If they see this as a helpful guidepost for them?
I think some of the technical support that we have provided in the end has resulted in some positive change in their institutions.
Well, for instance, Mary Grove was on the unsatisfactory list for a while. And they came in and they told us how they corrected everything, and they were off, they were okay. And I ran into the president not too long ago, and he was very proud of what they had done. And now I see this, and it's at risk again. So what, you know, is it the, is it the system? Or is it something that they did differently, or what happened?
I think that's something that, over the next year, we'll work with the institution to see where the areas of support are. And then what our team does is, we go out and help them find mentors and provide the assistance ourselves to develop a long-term plan. And since it is a progressive now, they should stay a little bit longer in an area where we can provide those supports.
Okay.
Michelle, then Dan, and Eileen.
Oh, yeah. Just a couple of questions. So let's say a institution is very good in, let's say, phys ed or art therapy program, or maybe not so, well, in English language, or there's a, there's a range. How do you distinguish, you know, my daughter wants to be phys ed teacher, so where she should go to school, it might not be someone has an aggregate score that's higher. Is there a way in this to distinguish which programs might be strong?
So this particular, the set of reports we gave you today, not so much. But every year, we publish a report of each of the programs and their pass rates, and that comes to the board, that's the next one that you'll get. And that's where you would be able to look at those small programs, as well as the large programs.
Okay. And I just have another one of the little questions. So in the, is it taken into account, well, I actually have a variety of questions. One is, is anything looked at or could be determined to, like, the diversity of the teachers that are coming out of the program? So someone would be rewarded for recruiting and getting through candidates to provide a diversity of teachers? So more black male teachers, or, you know, whatever the group is that might be underrepresented in the profession? Has that ever been considered? I don't know if it's something the federal government looks at. Sorry, and then this will be the last one.
It's one that we used to have.
Yeah.
It's-
It's in here.
It's in here, so they-
Apologize, ask as many-
Okay.
Take it from Dan.
Yeah, take it, yeah. I have seven questions to go. Um, no, I don't, just one. So I, is it, so I'm looking at, like, I'm, you know, near and dear to Wayne State, where I work, and where a lot of the teacher, the candidates are, you know, but they do consider diversity, and they do try to create, you know, teachers to feed into urban districts that, and oftentimes, they're being fed into districts where, you know, the test scores, and there's a lot of other issues going on that are different from maybe, you know, other parts of the state. A lot of, you know, turnover and changes happening. I don't know how that can be, when you look at these scores, if there's ways to take that into account. And I'm also very leery about using, you know, standardized test scores that often would correlate to issues of poverty, then, and using that against teachers who decide to teach in high-poverty districts. And if that's, you know, you know, when you look at the MEEP scores, or whatever it is, that somehow teachers would be, in some ways, punished because they decided to dedicate, you know, themselves to working in a high-poverty area.
So I'll take the first one on the standardized test scores correlating to poverty. I think the, that's one of the reasons that the educator evaluations are supposed to be key to growth, because there's almost zero correlation between demographics and growth, whereas there's a very strong correlation between status and poverty, status and demographics. It's still there, but it's pretty minor. So it ameliorates an awful lot of that when you use the student growth as the factor in the educator evaluations. And I think that's one of the reasons that people want to go there, is because there's very little correlation between the demographics of the students that are served and the outcome. But the-
Issue of diversity.
Yep. The other component, you actually touched on diversity, recruitment, and placement, kind of, in a trifecta there. And those are three additional components we're looking at for next year's score, and that would have kind of been on the last set of slides there. But we're trying to be thoughtful about expanding what we consider traditional diversity. And it's especially important for our northern schools that they have a lot of students from their local tribes. And we did not count that as diversity before, and we should have, because it's just as important a component. So we're looking at it, we're reevaluating what we were doing for diversity, trying to give credit without causing too much strain on some of our northern institutions that really struggle in recruiting diverse candidates, and be thoughtful about it for next year's score.
Good questions. Dan, and Eileen, and then I'm going to not cut any board member off if they want to continue. I'm going to try to get to item C also, so that we have time in the afternoon for your discussions on the other issues.
You may need to requeue me up. Three comments and three questions, and my apologies. But they're quick, I think. Three quick comments. One is, just want to publicly congratulate, so it's Phil Chase, is that your name? Yeah? So the, those are beautiful reports. And the accessibility of the report makes a ton of difference. So really good job on that. Second is, just want to congratulate the team. So I feel like this has been one of the, I've been really interested in this for the last four years. I'm not sure why, but just love the progress that's been made in the last four years around evaluating EPIs, and on working with the EPIs to kind of jointly come up with what that improvement would look like. Lastly, last comment, really looking forward to implementation of the year-out survey. I just, so hope we can get sizable sample numbers, because I think that the experience of a teacher a year out after having taught for a year is probably, and their assessment of how well they repaired is probably very different than it is on graduation. So question, I'll just ask one, and then you can requeue me. So maybe this one first. Rochester, so the, if we look at the cut score, so Rochester did not meet the cut score, but they seemed to move, they seemed to improve from red to yellow. So that was the one that left me like, what, so what does that mean?
So remember, they were low performing last year, and this cut score determined them to be at-risk and not low performing. Because when the reference group sets the cuts, they could choose at-risk or low performing. They determine at-risk. So it actually moved Rochester up a status into at-risk from low performing.
Okay.
And Eileen, and then back to Dan for requeuing.
So I just, this really probably goes without saying, but I just want to point out that the student surveys, the teacher surveys are only in Michigan, correct? You don't follow any graduate to a job out of state?
Even smaller than that, Michigan Public Schools.
And why only Michigan Public Schools?
They are the only ones that, sorry, I'm sorry, the surveys are any graduate of the institutions, because the institutions have that information. The ed eval data are only Michigan Public Schools because they're only the ones that are required to report it.
All right. It's interesting, though, because they might get a completely different picture if these students are going to either private schools in Michigan. It might be better, it might be worse. But I would also think that Michigan, you know, the state's graduates, EPI graduates are sought by other states, and then maybe that they would get stellar reports from other states. We wouldn't have any way of, they'd have to disaggregate it to try and make sure, because the standards wouldn't necessarily be the same.
Until we get other states on board and get some kind of national data sharing, you can't do it.
So, and I think that is also one of the reasons that we really reduce the weight of the, if, so if you have, if you're sending a large number to private schools or to other states, you have a small sample, we reduce the weight of that effectiveness rating that goes into your score.
And then the only other question I would ask is, do you survey students who haven't gotten jobs?
That will be part of the year-out survey, and we intend on doing the employed and the not-employed because we think that data is just as valuable in looking at that information.
Thanks, and great job.
Eileen, especially in the spirit that you're ably getting on the table about kind of consumer information, this is another one where so many kids, they're just not looking at the supply and demand stuff on the disciplines that can get jobs. So this will help kind of, usually, if you notice what we try to do in the department is use leverage points that we have authority on. Early this morning, we used one. That can produce some change. And one of them is to get folks understanding. Because remember, I might have reported out, I did report out, five, six, seven years ago, that in fairness to the institutions, when I brought up the supply and demand issue, they said, we can't make a kid want to be a math teacher if they love poetry and want to be- You can't, but they should at least know, you're not likely to get a job here, you're very likely to get a job here. And that's the difference, not that you can make them. So we're headed that way, the team. Appreciate Dan citing some of the people like Phil and others that have really pulled some great things off. Yes, sir.
Okay. The two other questions. So I'm assuming you thought about using like a three-year average or something instead of the annual progression? Is there a reason why, just for the data geeks here, and maybe the only one, why you didn't go with like a three-year average instead of the cut score, moving it, you know, through this progression over time?
So the cut score actually, the scores actually do contain multiple years of data. So there are multiple years of data in there to help stabilize things, and that particularly helps with some of the smaller institutions. But it was, you can still have a significant swing just depending on having a cohort that's very different from one year to the next, even in a, even in something that has the multiple-year averaging. So the progression allows us to even, allows us to mitigate even more some of that volatility. So we do have, we are mitigating volatility by having multiple years of data in the score itself, and then multiple years of score to define the progression. itself and then multiple years of score to define the progression.
Okay. Last question then. Philosophically, and I don't know that I have a really strong opinion on this right now, but I'm just curious, I'm sure you all have thought about this. So philosophically, you could, and this is piggybacking off of Michelle's great question about how this all ties to diversity in that profession. Philosophically, you could throw open the doors and say, we want everybody into the school as a candidate, right? But no, not all of you are going to make it out. Not all of you are going to pass the exam at the end of the process. Or you could go about the process of recruiting, kind of, you know, being really exclusive at the front end, but recruiting really hard to try and, and get a class that's representative of kind of larger demographic student body, whatever it is, you know, that you're going to be teaching down the road. Do you have an opinion about which of those kind of is, we should be encouraging as a policy matter, if either, or do we care? Like what's your, just what's your thought philosophically about the two available paths?
So accreditation, we have required them now to go all through national accreditation. And that program is going to require them to start getting their candidate pool from the top of the K-12 pool. So there are going to be some requirements in there that they're moving toward to increase the percentage of students that are actually coming out of the top 30% of their graduating class moving forward. So that's established. We don't necessarily disagree with that. It does pose challenges for universities that have mission statements of recruiting candidates that are not in that pool and really providing remediation. So we're going to think creatively about how we can mitigate that. Can a certain number of them come and you have to provide additional support? But it's going to require some thought with the institutions, I think, for that. I'd say we believe in multiple gates. In addition to that, you need to have opportunities throughout your program to identify candidates that are or are not going to be successful. And if you can't provide them the support, give them early exit so they don't get to the end and they're not meeting the expectations.
And I would add to that, Dan, kind of a similar story where, just this is true, but a little anecdotal in a sense, that superintendents often say to me, well, it's a good thing you guys are going after the higher ed, blah, blah, blah. We saw how few passed the test. Boy, it's good that you're locking that. And I said, that's on us. That's on you and me. The basic, that, I always draw a blank on the name of the.
Professional readiness.
The professional readiness test is what you should have for graduation from high school. And if they're not even doing that by sophomore year, that's on us. So I mean, the catch 22 here is where are these kind of balancing pressures to, we should have many, many, many more kids of all kinds of backgrounds in this so-called top 30%, and then it wouldn't be a problem. And if we're not, what are we doing early childhood? What are we doing K-12? I mean, that's why these, this is this cycle, this circle really, of trying to remedy this at both ends. That's the ultimate solution, obviously, is having enough kids prepared so you take, it takes care of itself, prepared in K-12, not having to have the remediation. But, you know, in fairness, it's that same thing. It's very difficult if you're a teacher that hasn't been prepared as well as you would like to have been prepared in order to be able to help these kids get to that level. So this is, there's enough, let me call it plain, there's enough.
Challenges.
Challenges for all of us at each end and not, I'm trying, if anything, reduce some of the, this going on right now. There's a fair amount of this going on K-12 and higher ed. It's, hey, we're both in this. Are we good? Thank you, guys. This is excellent. And I talked to John as president a little bit. We're going to try to push through C so that there's enough time for discussion this afternoon.
Important discussion this afternoon, should we just skip three?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
I wanted to make sure we have enough time for our discussion.
That's what I'm saying. So we're going to try to push through this item this morning as we planned so that there's plenty of time this afternoon.
She's suggesting skipping three.
Oh, Kevin, how about I just try not to ask any questions? How about I just try not to ask any questions?
Let's do it and get done by phone.
Yeah.
We can do it.
Because this is, this is part of an ongoing, the board requests an ongoing thing on science. So this isn't a culminating presentation today. And I gave our guys a little bit of a heads up and said, you know, 20 minutes ago, try to, but on the other hand, respect the work done. And I think Don, John's saying we'd shoot for 12:15. So between the presentation. Because I'm exactly with you, Cap. That's exactly where we're going to try to move through this. So please, team, Vanessa, you may start it. I won't even do my piece, you do.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. And it is still morning for five more minutes. So this is the second in a series of presentations we've been doing about science education. And just to kind of remind everybody, as we began talking about the future of science education in Michigan, about a year ago, it was, it was a while ago, one of the things that the board said is we wanted to have more kind of ongoing discussions about this. So we've been trying to bring pieces of this back to you over time. So today, we're talking about assessing the teaching and learning of science. And so our focus is more on assessment, knowing that there's a lot of questions and also it's a long process to get to that. But we did want to turn our attention to that at least for 20 minutes, if we can do by 12:15. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Linda.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, from where we were last month and, or two months ago, bringing up to date, we're looking at how do we get to quality science instruction in the state? And today, we're going to be taking a look at aligned assessments. We're going to spend a little, there's some tangential time with school improvement, science instruction support, and professional development. But our biggest focus today is on aligned assessments. And our objectives for today are to get an insight into the assessment considerations that we'll need, not just at the state level, but across the classrooms and regionally and some of the other information that's coming forward through some of the other work that we're doing with online assessments. We also want to take a look at what this might mean for things like educator effectiveness, school rankings and other issues, if we were going to put in place a quality science assessment aligned to some of our vision for science education. And we also want to highlight the strategies that will aid us in making that transition to a more appropriate outcomes for science education. So just a reminder, where we are today, science in Michigan and the assessments, fifth, eighth, and 11th grade assessments, you will note that there is a slight tick up, but not enough that we would want to do the happy dance yet. We don't have the 11th grade data yet, so that's why that's not represented. But you'll notice that we are down in the lower percentiles across the board. And this does not reflect well, when you think about the kinds of jobs that are available in Michigan that are going unanswered, and the kinds of skills that our kids need in order to do those jobs well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andy, who's going to talk a little bit about state assessments and some considerations there.
Yeah, I'll just give a brief snapshot of what state assessments look like in Michigan from the perspective of a summative nature. So we're talking what we've known as the MEEP and the MME, science pieces. Moving forward, starting with spring of 15, assessments for science are going to be in grades four, seven, and 11. Those grades are shifting from five to eight down to four to seven because we're moving to spring assessments in Michigan. So that's the need of when those science assessments will occur. And we are also moving to online assessments, starting with the spring of 15. So assessments in Michigan, we're going to be, again, looking at windows of time for administration, not necessarily what we've been used to with exact days or half a days of administration when we were paper-based. And moving to new state assessments, you know, if new standards are adopted down the road.
And what are those?
The new MEEP, yes. So if, moving to new state assessments based on any new science standards, you know, again, as we've seen with the transition with new MEEP or new math and ELA standards, it's going to be an overhaul, and you can go to the next slide. It's going to be an overhaul completely from the ground up in what we're looking at. We're looking at online assessment. There's going to be new item types. Any new science standards will involve critical thinking skills, a lot of the same things we've looked at with our new math and ELA standards moving forward. So in brief, a timeline, we're looking at, on the top, you can see, that's the journey we're on with the new RFP we're working on that we're going to put out by September 1st. Down below is what will science look like? So if new standards are adopted at some point, it's going to be three, four, five-year process to really open up the hood and rebuild from the ground up what science assessment looks like with new item types and things moving forward. And that will start with collaboration with Linda's office and the building of new items that will need to get field tested over time so we can get them exposed before we can move to a full operational assessment for this new science, probably in the 18, 19 school year. And that's an optimistic timeline at this point. So Steve?
I'll be at that meeting, by the way. I'm the guy in shorts and sunglasses in the back of the room.
Your book, please.
Exactly. Well, with respect to those assessments, then, part of what we did want to look at is, knowing that we've got this, this length of timeline in terms of any transition, we wanted to look at what, what the actual impact is really going to be on schools as well as all of those other stakeholders in the process. And then what some of the other strategies may be used to try and remediate that during that timeline lag that we have. When we look at statewide assessments in terms of some of the different considerations for them, there are wide, wide range of considerations, as you can see here, ranging from those that are more immediate in nature, addressing multiple different stakeholders. So for instance, from a state level, we look at these for accountability purposes. Whereas individual districts and educators may look at this in terms of programming for professional learning for teachers for the, for the summer and upcoming year to see what kinds of things they want to focus on. As we look at, as we expand this out more broadly and look at data over time, though, you can see there are some different considerations that come up here as well. Educator effectiveness being one, for instance, that has a significant impact on individual districts and educators because they need to be able to look at data over time to see what's going to be happening with growth. ISDs or mass science centers or some of the other supports meanwhile, are looking at these same kinds of considerations to figure out, for the body of teachers that they support, what kinds of programming do they need to put in place to be able to provide the most appropriate professional learning support for schools or other supports around curriculum issues and other considerations? And then, as you can see, for long-term considerations, there are other things as well that affect us here at the state level, such as policy outcomes, how it impacts the state curriculum, and so on. In order to try and remediate some of these issues, there are some strategies that we can look at that can take place. Some are taking place now. And so we wanted to pull out one example of these, for instance, that's taking place at a regional level. Local and regional assessments for science can be done where pre-imposed assessments or interim assessments are provided to students along the way since we do not have statewide assessments by grade level for these topics. This is being done in particular, this example is from work that's taking place in the Eastern Upper Peninsula ISD. This is an ISD that supports 19 different school, schools or school districts over a range of 4,400 square miles. It's the largest coverage area for an ISD that we have. And so part of the mechanism they set up to try to work with their educators was to set up these pre-post and interim assessments done at every grade level in science. They could not only use these to support individual teachers, but these also then became the basis for what happens in terms of school improvement so that they can see what's happening in an individual school and where a focus might be. They can look at this for professional learning needs. And they can then, as an ISD and mass science center, figure out what some of the different supports and resources may need to be. They're doing this where the assessments are provided at least on an annual basis. Some teachers have elected to create some of their own assessments that they're engaging in on a unit-by-unit basis. So every four to six weeks, doing these kinds of assessments. And this is groups of teachers who have collaborated together on this within the ISD. So they've also made this a part of their own professional learning efforts going on in that region as well. In terms of how this then plays out for the district and for that region, they're generating reports of individual student growth on these assessments so that teachers can look at what's happening over the course of the school year, see where students might be deficient in certain areas and be able to respond to that. Likewise, the ISD is able to look at these same things on a broader level, looking at all of the schools within the region to see, are there specific topics or issues that need particular attention and are being called out in the early or interim assessments? This is really, if you think of this, a science-specific version of multi-tiered systems of support so that you can do this kind of analysis on a student-by-student basis. One of the other things that they're doing, again, in the, in Sault Ste. Marie for this group of schools, is they recognize that individual schools are looking at different kinds of assessments that they may have purchased or used along the way. So they're doing crosswalk analyses of these different assessments. When teachers in the eighth grade are looking at MEEP results that they've had so far and then recognize that they can use the explore test as well, part of what they've been able to do with this is they've been able to crosswalk these two assessments so that they can not only see what's happening in terms of science content and practices that are being assessed, but then how is this being reflected in terms of their student body and population? How are students doing as they, as they walk through these different assessments to see what kind of correlation they're getting between these different tools that they use? They're also applying some of these things to focus on very individualized responses to student needs. This is a table that was generated by an assessment created by a teacher where the teacher could have students go through the assessment and within five minutes could look at the summary of data here to see, on a student-by-student basis, which students were having problems with particular areas of content? What misconceptions might they have about these things? So that they could provide direct response to student needs that very day or that very hour in the classroom. This is really a formative assessment process that's taking place on a regional level, again, using that notion of multi-tiered systems of support. We also talked about this presentation, not just addressing the needs of, of learning, but the needs of teaching as well. And other assessments that are done at a regional level include the surveys of enacted curricula. What this kind of analysis can do is it provides an opportunity for schools to look at the coverage being reported by individual teachers on individual topics by grade level and to correlate that with the existing standards that we have in Michigan around what amount of time should be spent on these. You can look at this particular graph and see, this is a heat map kind of graph or elevation kind of graph here, that the teacher in this example is providing broad coverage on a few areas where they should be focusing, if we look at the graph on the left, a great deal of time and energy on these particular topics and adding in some other topics that weren't being covered by this particular teacher. So these kinds of assessment tools being used at a regional level can really point to the professional learning needs. They can point to curriculum alignment issues and other issues of school improvement that take place. They can also look not only at the regional or district level, but at the classroom and school level for assessments. This particular assessment is one that you saw back in May when we looked at an example of a vision for science education. Part of what we can do is establish different tools such as rubrics to guide educators through more in-depth kinds of assessment. Here you see this particular student and samples of her work as well as her writing. This kind, or having tools such as rubrics for more in-depth analyses like we have here of claim evidence and reasoning would allow the teacher to respond to this student, Charlotte, to be able to figure out what particular issue she may be having and be able to tailor a response to her individualized needs. We can also see, if we have rubrics for this kind of work, this gets well beyond the multiple choice kind of. kind of analysis that we may be used to seeing in classrooms. This is getting to greater depth of understanding for these students. At the classroom and school level, we are used to some of the kinds of assessments we've seen as common local assessments, whether they are MEAP assessments or those created that I just demonstrated from the Eastern UP earlier. But there are some other tools as well that can be used to move the instruction that we talked about and those student outcomes that we saw on the vision slide. The use of artifacts for, or analysis of artifacts is one example of this. This is a great example where we can use the process of examining student work to see what is really taking place in a school. A good example of the variation you can see in this is, I'll use the example of walking through Keith Elementary when meeting our Teacher of the Year, where you could look in classrooms there and see all sorts of different kinds of work in the classroom. Each student represented the work in their own unique way. Whereas in other schools, looking at same kinds of examples of this, you might see posters that all look the same, 26 posters that look like they're more or less copies, individualized copies of the same content. What that guides you to in terms of student improvement or school improvement is that the kind of instruction going on there is not focusing on individualized student responses, but rather everyone just getting the pieces together for the same response, where you really don't have depth of understanding. This can build to other kinds of assessment, and performance assessment is one that really is a key for science instruction in particular. Not all science instruction can easily be captured in a written format. Sometimes you need to see the student performing an experiment, as we see in the picture here of a water quality analysis that's taking place in a local river. These kinds of assessments and then the rubrics that teachers may have to better evaluate this are the kinds of tools that are going to move this instruction forward as we work on a process toward the eventual timeline for statewide assessments. We also have some similar outcomes to what we've seen for this before. In particular, what we see for these kinds of assessments is they have far more significant focus on immediate outcomes. We can see what the misunderstandings are at the time that they're happening and the teacher be able to respond to these things immediately. Similarly, we can see this with other kinds of assessment, like analysis of student artifacts or performance assessment. And all of these things can then factor in some of the other considerations we have, such as teacher evaluation. For instance, other states are using this process of student learning objectives as a mo, as a means of evaluating student growth for teacher evaluation processes. That can more easily be done, not just from a set of common assessments, but ideally from analysis of student artifacts and performance assessments that we may see. This brings us back to the vision.
We are working now to achieve this vision, and we looked today at aligned assessments and school improvement. Going forward, we're going to be taking a look at instructional support, the infrastructure that's necessary there, research, and high, high learning projects, and some of the other things that you'd like to see in instruction. And that'll be the impact that we'll, the piece that we'll be looking at for our next presentation with you in this series.
Great, thank you. More comments, questions? More to come?
Wonderful. I'm glad you said that. You talked about assessments that are actually, but we used to think we had the assessments for diagnostic purposes because, as you pointed out at the beginning, the state has accountability and the local district has evaluation and the, there are all kinds of purposes for the test except what it was originally created for was for diagnostic purposes.
Exactly. And that's one of the most critical ones, we understand, for science as well because you so often bring out the specific misconceptions that students have through those kind of diagnostic pieces so the teacher can more adequately respond.
Good point.
So this brings up another question. What are we going to adopt or approve the science standards?
Good question.
Well, the strategy the board asked us to look at was have a number of these presentations that were still on the horizon, and then it would be for you to determine when you'd like us to bring that to you in agenda planning. So we're, we're open to that thinking as you see that.
It's almost like putting a cart before the horse, maybe not.
Eileen, please.
I would just point out that the board and the staff have not yet had the discussion about adoption of next-gen science standards and that it'd be sensible to put in STEM or new STEM standards because we all agree that we need them and that it's an urgent situation. We just haven't determined what.
Okay.
And I'd like to commend you for the work because this, I love science. I shouldn't. I'm a musician, I'm not supposed to go there, but this sort of thing, which brings science to life and makes it exciting in the classroom, I think, we've been hearing over and over again from the science teachers in Michigan that they're ready for this, they want it. And to see this assessment start to breathe life is very, very exciting.
Thank you, Eileen. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, it does look wonderful and it makes a lot of sense. Concern that I had was districts that are so strapped for money right now, financially, it looks like an expensive thing to do, to have you take field trips, to have money for labs. And is there any plan or any, or maybe that's our role to try to do, to make sure, maybe you see grant opportunities coming down so that this type of education can be for all children?
If you can bear with us, next month's presentation, at least we've got it planned out, will be about instruction and some of the costs and some of the issues that arise from that.
Okay.
Which may bring that into a CRISPR view.
Okay. If I can add a quick point to that. The Michigan Science Center is waiting to find out what's going to be happening. And I know, of course, that the existing machine math and science centers have kids. There are, there are many things that are being put in place to try and make sure that there are low-cost alternatives for pricier stuff.
Okay. Great. Thank you, guys. Good work, as always.
Thank you.
We should be exactly on time if you want to address D quickly, because we said by 12:20. And that's, so there, any discussion regarding the criteria for the grant in D? Would you like to?
I do have a question. I forgot what it was.
This is the one, otherwise it would be on the consent agenda.
In honor of Nancy Danhoff.
Yeah.
It's an Nancy Danhoff item.
It's exactly what we called it yesterday. Remembering Nancy? We miss her.
She was the one who wanted this on the agenda.
We like Richard. He's Nancy. There should be.
Those regulations.
It's early.
Then it was fiduciary.
I thought it was Michelle.
I had a question about the-
Yes, sure.
Is the fiduciary part, part of the criteria or is that, because at one point it said, well, consider fiduciary separately, and then it's listed here. And if that's a charac, I mean, there are some districts that seem to have a problem with how you manage all these grants and everything, and that would exclude them, and they need the help, they need a lot of help. So is it possible, would exclude a lot of districts?
That, the criteria went?
Yeah.
No.
Districts that need a lot of help.
Yeah. These grant criteria are for our fiscal agent who, who helps us or who we use to administer our statewide system of support. Linda can talk more about it, but it, no districts are not getting something.
It's not a district issue, it's a fiscal agent issue. It's not a district issue, it's a fiscal agent issue. Who's going to be the fiscal agent?
Who will be the fiscal agent? That's what I wanted to know. Was this for all the districts or the fiscal?
This is to find a fiscal agent to serve us so that we can get all of the services out to the schools that need them.
Oh, okay. So it's, okay, that's really the question I had.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And this is moving it up from what would have been the end of the year to mid-year is what we're trying to do and-
I don't think it was quite clear from this that that's what you're asking for. Maybe you could clarify it, that it's for the fiscal agent, not just for everybody. It's a criteria for the fiscal agent.
It's criteria for the, for the grant to allow the fiscal agent, to put the fiscal agent in place.
Right.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
And under kind of the new rules, MAISA would not be eligible for this. So we're, that's one reason we wanted to not wait till the end of the year. Let's reestablish that mid-year and move on.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. So we're good. We're actually, Merch, you're a genius. You've got this 12:20, you said possibly we would get this done. And John, thank you. And what do you think, time back at 10 after 1? 10 after 1? Okay. Thank you.
Have you seen any list of who actually has gotten these grants?
No, this is a new-
Great, how are you?
Six. But I, there's some other people I think that are going to give to me that haven't, you know, because they told me they were coming and I don't have their-